It is six o'clock now. We will go and call the meeting to order. If you would, please rise. This time, we would like to recognize Pastor Ralph Emerson to lead us in our invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather and to grow together. We thank you for these representatives on this council that you would bless their families. We thank you for giving them wisdom and unity. We thank you for progression in our city and what you will do. God, for all those who are here and representing the people who inhabit this place. And so, God, bless this meeting, God, and the work of these hands. In Jesus's name that I pray. Amen.
This time, council member Hamilton will lead us into the pledge.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the Texas flag?
On the Texas flag, our pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
You may be seated.
So if I could get Haley Howley, if she could come up on behalf of May is for Miracle Month. We have a proclamation, says City of Odessa Proclamation, where as the Children's Miracle Network's mission is to increase funds and awareness for medical center, health system, and other hospitals, to provide the best care for kids in children's hospital and rely on donations and community support. Donations stay local to support the needs of medical center health system, to fund critical treatments, pediatric medical equipment, and healthcare services. The promise of saving and improving children's lives is reflected in May's awareness campaign on the NICU and pediatric patients, families, and staff. Now therefore, I, David R. Turner, by the virtue of authority vested as mayor of the City of Odessa, do hereby proclaim the month of May is May for Miracles Month, dedicated to the Children's Miracle Network.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you for having me. I'm the coordinator of Children's Miracle Network, and I've been there since about August. It's been the most rewarding job I think I've ever had, seeing those little NICU babies and the kids in the pediatrics is just the best thing ever. So, May for Miracles is basically just an awareness campaign, just to let you know that, you know, 100% of donations stay local, and we serve 19 counties. And you never know when it could be, you know, someone that you know, maybe you had a baby in a NICU yourself, or you may have a grandchild in the pediatrics unit. So this is directly affecting families and kids in the Permian Basin, and thank you very much.
Mr. Hamm, can you come forward, please?
It's my privilege to be able to give you this proclamation. It says, City of Odessa Proclamation. Odessa Arts was formed in 1978, and today, the Odessa Arts, its membership comprised over 30 art agencies, individual artists, and art-minded citizens. Its mission is to support and promote the arts in Odessa and Ector County through cultural tourism, art education, and art advocacy. Through the support of the City of Odessa's Hotel Motel Tax Fund, Odessa Arts provides grants to the creative industry in Odessa, increasing the quality of life for residents and encouraging cultural tourism. Now therefore, I, David R. Turner, by the virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Odessa, do hereby proclaim April 21st through 27th, Arts Appreciation Week.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Mayor Turner, and members of city council. Everyone here is used to me coming up and talking about the arts. It's kind of getting boring at this point. But what you do and the work that you allow Odessa Arts to do affects so many arts agencies, and I've invited just a few of them to come up very quickly and say thank you for the work that you've done. And we're going to start with Eric Baker.
Thank you all. Good evening. My name is Eric Baker, and I'm here to represent the Odessa College Visual and Performing Arts Department. Because of the grants afforded to Odessa Arts through the use of Hotel Motel Tax Money, we were able to bring in two visual artists from Dallas to display their work in the Phillips Goff Gallery at Odessa College. Artist talks, a closing reception, and the stunning works on display gave our community an opportunity to experience artwork otherwise inaccessible to them. We were also able to partner with the International Trumpet Guild to bring in world-renowned trumpet soloist Rex Richardson. Rex performed a solo recital and gave a full day of master classes and clinics. Over 80 individuals from outside of Odessa attended this event, and approximately 60 of those booked hotel rooms, dined in our local restaurants, and spent money in our city. We will be using Hotel Motel funds to host Los Angeles drummer Dave Tull on Tuesday, April 30th. Dave will be coaching local students, presenting master classes, and will perform with the Odessa College Jasmine in the beautifully renovated Globe Theater. This event is free to the public, thanks to grant money awarded from Odessa Arts and the City of Odessa. We have more artists and performers coming in the fall that will be supported through these funds, and I want to personally thank each one of you for your support of the arts. Music, theater, dance, visual arts, and literature make Odessa such an enriching place to work and live, and so, thank you very much.
One more.
Hello, my name is Eric Baker, and I'm here also to represent the West Texas Jazz Society. Thanks to Hotel Occupancy Tax Money, we were able to produce the 53rd Annual West Texas Jazz Party, which is next month. May 17th through the 18th at the MCM Elegant Hotel right here in Odessa, we will host 15 of the world's greatest jazz musicians for three nights of music. This event is the longest-running jazz party in the world. This event is the longest-running jazz party in the world. And we host it right here. With your help, we're able to keep this West Texas treasure alive and strong. Jazz music is America's original art form, created in America by Americans. It is such an important part of our cultural heritage. Our mission at the Jazz Society is the preservation, the perpetuation, and the expansion of America's original musical art form, the promotion of jazz as an art form among the young, and the presentation of quality jazz performances in the Permian Basin. With your help, we can continue this important work in our community. So, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council.
There's more.
I am not Eric Baker, and I'm only doing this once. Good evening. My name is Carolina Keith. I am currently the Executive Vice President of the Midland Odessa Symphony Guild, I mean Guild, I'm so sorry I was there, Midland Odessa Symphony and Corral. We are so grateful to be awarded $18,000 from the city arts grants, which enable us to present the Spring 2019 Series of Concerts for the community. We wish to express our sincere thanks to the city council and for investing in the Odessa cultural community, and we look forward for your continued support. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Shelley Wright, and I am here today representing Midland Festival Ballet as their board president. We are fortunate, excuse me, we were fortunate to receive a cultural tourism grant in the amount of $15,000 for 2019. With this funding, we are able to fund the end of our 25th anniversary season, including a production of Giselle, a classical ballet, at the Wagner Noel Performing Arts Center this weekend, actually. This also, the funds also help support operations at our nonprofit school, which serves students from Odessa, Midland, Andrews, and Greenwood. We thank the city council for their investment in Odessa's cultural community, and we look forward to your continued support. Thank you.
Hi there. I'm Dr. Joyce Miller, and I'm with Artisan Art Walk. I want to thank you, Mayor, and members of the council for giving Artisan Art Walk $13,000 in cultural awareness grant. We're so appreciative. We just completed our second annual Artisan Art Walk. It was the first weekend in April. We were able to have workshops, demonstrations, hands-on, kids' events. We were supporting artists so they could sell their good work, and we were also, we had a judged art show, and I just can't thank you enough for allowing us the opportunity to do that.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Latimer, and I am the president-elect of the Ellen Noel Art Museum Board. And I just want to thank that the museum was fortunate to receive a cultural tourism grant in the amount of $28,000 this year. The funding has helped us to bring in the popular exhibition, The Golden Age of Hollywood Costumes, from December to March this year, which drew in 65 visitors from other states, 12 visitors from other countries, and our records tracked 42 hotel nights associated with this exhibit. We also had hundreds of visitors from the Permian Basin and the rest of the state, and many returned to see the exhibit more than once. Our social media pages received comments from people all over the world asking if the exhibition would be touring after it left the museum. Funding also has helped us secure an exhibition of Japanese woodcuts on loan from the Syracuse University Art Collection. Third-grade ECISD will have the opportunity to tour the exhibition as part of the Fall 2019 Fine Arts Connection Program. Many schools from surrounding communities like Crane, Big Spring, and Midland also visit the museum during this time to take advantage of the educational opportunities provided by this program. Funding from the Hotel Motel Tax has helped to expand our Art-to-Go program into 13 schools this year and will allow us to continue adding even more schools next year. And on behalf of the Ellen Noel Art Museum, I'd like to thank the city council and for their investment in the Odessa cultural community, and we look forward to continuing this relationship. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Brian Serrano with the Permian Playhouse. We want to say thank you to the mayor, the city council, and all of you also for supporting art, because all of our organizations need people. And so, thank you for your presence tonight, letting the city council know that art is a very important part of our community, and we appreciate that. We were blessed to receive $26,000 to help fund our season this year in a cultural tourism grant. We have clocked people from 17 states, and we've only done two shows so far this year. We have 80 students that are going to be doing two summer camps this year, and they are representing six cities in the Permian Basin. They're going to be driving back and forth every day, eating here, the night of the shows they'll be staying here, and all of this is made possible by the cultural tourism grant. And on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Permian Playhouse, we can't say thank you enough.
I'm Susan Leshnow, and I'm representing two organizations. The first one is Casade in the Basin. For 14 years, due to your very, very staunch support, the Casade String Quartet, my daughter's the second violinist, and this was her vision, and she brought her colleagues from New York to Odessa, and now also to Midland, to inspire students in our schools to develop a love for chamber music. And through chamber music, the students are also taught communication skills, accountability, responsibility, you have to show up on time, you have to learn how to listen to your colleagues, and they have served, over time, 11,000 students, parents, music educators, and community at large. People have come from Amarillo, Lubbock, Alpine, and this unique program, which is done at no cost whatsoever to the students. This program has been featured in London, England, in Tokyo, Japan, and in the United States at the Hot Springs Music Festival, and at Texas Tech. They have commissioned and premiered eight triple-string quartets, which is a genre in which the students and their artist teachers perform together. Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. The second organization that I'm representing is the Allegro Corral, and we've been singing for 15 years, and again, we couldn't do it without the funding from the Odessa Arts Council. This organization is for people who live and work in the Permian Basin. It's open to everyone, and our motto is "Music Unites Us," and we make every effort to sing multicultural music in languages from Polish to Spanish to all sorts of different languages. We have collaborated with Irish dancing groups, with mariachis, and we welcome ideas. We're talking about collaborating with the Permian Playhouse. Our conductor is Ken Seelof, who brought a new vision to the group. He wanted to make it semi-professional, and by that, he meant that you have all the teachers who teach elementary, junior high, high school music, they're choral teachers because they love to sing, but they don't always get a chance to do what they like. And so, he has brought them into the Allegro Corral, and they get a chance to sing at a very high level, to learn a lot, to interact with their colleagues, and it has generated such enthusiasm that I really feel that they take that energy back into our classrooms of ECISD, and therefore, I feel like the indirect benefit is that Allegro has served hundreds and hundreds of our students. Thank you very, very much for your funding. We couldn't do it without you. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Craig Van Amberg, and I'm here tonight to represent the Wagner Noel Performing Arts Center. I've had the opportunity to serve on the advisory council for the Wagner since day one back in 2011, and I've seen firsthand what the Hotel Occupancy Funds distributed by Odessa Arts have brought to the community. I've said many times that the Wagner Noel has been one of the greatest things to occur in Midland, Odessa, since I moved here over 40 years ago. The Wagner Noel is able to use grant funds to bring truly unique performances to our area that are not often represented by touring promoters, and it gives the citizens of Odessa the opportunity to see high-quality theater, concerts, and other performances that they may not be able to afford to go see in other markets where they have to pay for expensive tickets, travel, hotel, and all those type things. They stay at home, go to the Wagner, and keep the money locally. Just last week, Randy was responsible for helping bring Postmodern Jukebox, which performed here, and Odessa Arts threw a wonderful speakeasy right before the performance. That was a very, very fun event for everyone. And then also, other truly unique performances, such as the Tao Drum Heat and Circle Louise Salon, which also appeared at the Wagner Noel on its magnificent stage. All of these large-scale performances bring in numerous artists and performers that have never traveled to our area before. The grant funds also help keep ticket prices affordable to allow patrons to take a chance on a new style of show that they may not have ever experienced before, and show them an appreciation for a genre that they have never experienced. On behalf of the entire advisory board of the Wagner Noel Performing Arts Center, we truly thank the Odessa City Council for their investment in Odessa's cultural community, and we look forward to your continued support.
Hi. My name is Chris Stanley. I'm here from the University of Texas, the Permian Basin. We were fortunate enough to receive a cultural council grant in the amount of $20,000 this year for our continued programming in art gallery, the Nancy Fire Cardoja Gallery, Pots and Prints, our national endowment for the arts, mobile studio that has been nationally recognized in publications like The Washington Post, the West Texas Guitar Festival, the John Ben Shepard Leadership Institute, and guest speakers for our Spanish program. We capped off this last year bringing the Smithsonian to the Permian Basin, and we hope that that relationship continues, and so, we thank you profoundly for the money and the support. Thank you very much.
Good evening, city council. My name is Matt Riss, and I have the privilege of serving as the Odessa Arts Board President. I'm also an ICA team member. As many of you know, ICA owns and operates two hotels right here in Odessa. The name's often wrong a little bit, but it's the MCM Elegant Hotel and the MCM Grande Fondo. We continue to have a great relationship with the arts agencies here in Odessa, and we know the value of investing the Hotel Occupancy Tax Money into arts agencies. Our hotels, for example, recently hosted Odessa Arts for our annual Black and White Ball, and we're about to host the 53rd Annual West Texas Jazz Party. We look forward to hosting many more of these events. I'm here today to thank the City of Odessa for investing Hotel Occupancy Tax Dollars in these important ways.
I'd just like to take a moment to thank Randy and the board for your enthusiasm for the arts and for your energy, Randy. I think Odessa is blessed to have you in the board to bring us what we have in art, and we certainly appreciate it. Thank you very much. And thank you for our lovely flowers and the reception as well. Thank you.
Okay, we will move to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Move to other council actions. We'll consider bid award for the Cummins South Plains LLC. Mr. Kerr?
Good evening, council. My name is Shane Bowles. I'm the utilities engineer for the City of Odessa and looking for the approval of the consideration of bid for the 2.0 megawatt generator. This is for our water treatment plant to replace the stamie generator that has failed us and is beyond repair. It is to become within state regulations by the TCQ, and it is for $625,462 to South Plains Common Sales and Services.
Okay, are there any questions from council? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, move to public hearings. We will open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request by Corey and Lavor Polk. Mr. Brennely.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Related to this request, the city sent out 24 notices. We had one notice returned. We did not receive a positive or a negative response. The property involved in the request is located in the 500 block of Fitch Avenue. Site is currently zoned general residential, and it is occupied by residential use. Land use in the general area does consist of single-family residential development and mobile home development. As stated, the property owners are Corey and Lavor Polk, and they are also the applicants in this case, and the purpose of the request is to consider approval of a specific use permit to allow an accessory-use one-chair beauty shop on the property. And a site plan has been provided that does indicate a 6,000-square-foot lot. It does show the location of the existing single-family mobile home residence, and that is approximately 1,368 square feet. And it does show the location of the proposed one-chair shop, which is 288 square feet. There are two parking spaces existing for the mobile home, and two parking spaces will be provided for the proposed beauty shop on this location. The building setbacks and overall lot coverage, which is approximately 28% of this property, are within ordinance requirements. The Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to this request with the adoption of the following conditions. There will not be a sign allowed on the property. There will be one operator of the shop that is an immediate family member. Hours of operation will be limited to 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. All applicable building codes will need to be met. The placement of the accessory shop will follow all city ordinances, and the owners will obtain all necessary permits. Review of this permit upon receiving any neighborhood complaints. This is considered a temporary permit, and the city council would have the right for termination for any violation of the terms and conditions of this permit or because of a negative effect on the surrounding neighborhood, and this would occur after a public hearing. Also, adoption of this site plan. And as stated, the Planning and Zoning Commission did approve this request unanimously, and the staff does concur with this recommendation and be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from council? Okay, this is a public hearing, so at this time, I will open up the floor for anyone who would like to comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, move to miscellaneous, the appointments of boards. Ms. Grimaldo.
For the Board of Survey, reappoint Eddie Shelton. For the Citizens Golf Advisory Committee, reappoint Mark Mounds. Appoint Rhonda Spikes. And appoint Gary Bitit. For the Planning and Zoning Commission, reappoint Jim Rector. For the Traffic Advisory Committee, reappoint Ray Beatty. For the Zoning Board of Adjustment, reappoint Mark Wyndham. And that's it.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We do have one card for citizen comments on non-agenda items. Mr. Rector.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Jim Rector, 7100 Tobosa, where the red rose is on a corner and its sales signs in the front yard. Tonight, council, I want to speak to you concerning the unprecedented situation that now exists for the future of our city. I've read the workforce study, and empirical solutions are derived from reliable sources in that study, and they certainly can be deemed in most part as accurate as can be determined at this time. However, the study falls short of confronting the real problem that is presented to us for long-term conditions of our city. According to the demographers, Odessa, not Ector County, has grown from 100,000 to 118,000 in the first seven years of this decade. In actuality, it has grown 16,000 from 213 to 2017, which is a ratio of 3,200 new residents per year for five years. If current conventional wisdom is correct, that growth will continue through 2025 and then return to the normal natural migration rate of slightly over 1% per annum. These numbers imply a population of 145,000 people in 2025 and 152,000 in 2030. As we stand here tonight, Odessa is confronted with an impossible situation. It may be possible to eventually achieve parity in housing accommodations, plus provide funds for the public or private to achieve parity in roads and streets, utility infrastructure, retail, and city services for the current situation, but it's impossible for the future. Consider these facts. Ector County has 902 square miles. The City of Odessa has 52 square miles, six of which are in Midland County. The City of Odessa
Tonight, council, I want to speak to you concerning the unprecedented situation that now exists for the future of our city. I've read the workforce study, and empirical solutions are derived from reliable sources in that study, and they certainly can be deemed in most part as accurate as can be determined at this time. However, the study falls short of confronting the real problem that is presented to us for long-term conditions of our city. According to the demographers, Odessa, not Ector County, has grown from 100,000 to 118,000 in the first seven years of this decade. In actuality, it has grown 16,000 from 213 to 2017, which is a ratio of 3,200 new residents per year for five years. If current conventional wisdom is correct, that growth will continue through 2025 and then return to the normal natural migration rate of slightly over 1% per annum. These numbers imply a population of 145,000 people in 2025 and 152,000 in 2030. As we stand here tonight, Odessa is confronted with an impossible situation. It may be possible to eventually achieve parity in housing accommodations, plus provide funds for the public or private to achieve parity in roads and streets, utility infrastructure, retail, and city services for the current situation, but it's impossible for the future. Consider these facts. Ector County has 902 square miles. The city of Odessa has 52 square miles, six of which are in Midland County. The city of Odessa occupies 5.1% of Ector County. We've imposed upon ourselves a responsibility to accommodate all of this growth within our city boundaries. Using the data from the housing study as a guide for computation, we're committing ourselves to providing upward of 12,000 living units, not homes, single-family, but living units, plus the attendant infrastructure from 2010 to 2030, in two decades, 12,000 people. Council, it's not possible for our city as it now exists to accomplish this. If we were able to use every open piece of land available within our current city limits, we could not handle the influx of people expected by 2030. There are some possibilities for expansion in the future that may seem drastic at this time, but necessary to ensure the required landmass for the coming decades. At the risk of sounding too Churchillian to you, our elected officials stand on the brink of the most important decisions in our 91-year history, and immediately should begin to formulate a strategic plan to ensure the ability of our city to grow in the coming decades. The decisions you will be required to make during your tenure on the council will affect the citizens of Odessa for decades to come. Your decisions will be landmark and guideposts for future councils to follow for the life of our city, and I for one believe that this council is up to the task. Thank you for your dedicated service, and God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Rector.
Thank you.
Can we get a copy of that, please?
I'm sorry?
Can we get a copy of that with all the wonderful changes?
It so happens that my beautiful wife sitting right here has-- after he strikes the gavel, we--
Thank you, Mr. Rector. Okay, we've reached the end of our agenda. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you, Art Council, for all y'all doing, thank you again very much. Thank y'all. [applause]